You'll find that a couple of the things that when the warrant went to print weren't ready, so they made sure that you had an extra copy of the new latest warrant and a supplement for Article 1 and 2 because the numbers were just a little bit different. And they weren't available at the time of printing. So when we cover Articles 1 and 2, you want to be looking to that supplemental, I think it's about three or four sheets of paper that you got along with the warrant. Microphones, a little bit different this year. We put them in the back. Again, because we're trying to avoid people passing each other in the aisles, the middle aisles are all for coming down, and the far aisle to my left and to my right are for going back. So if you wish to speak to an article, make your way to the aisles on the side and make your way back to the microphone, which is right at the very front of the gym floor. And you'll see also that there's some tape there to help people space accordingly. And if it's full, just make sure that you stand back and wait. And we'll move through it that way. Plus, we have a microphone over here if anybody cares to use it. I do ask that when you get up and you wish to speak to an article, that you give your full name clearly, and then your precinct or your address, so that our reporter, Linda, can get everything down nice and clearly for our verbatim record that is made later. So sometimes when we talk, we tend to speak a little bit quickly, but just slow it down a little bit, and you'll have your full say, and we'll make sure that everybody in the audience gets to understand what you're trying to ask. There are some headsets, so if anybody has some hearing difficulties, I believe we have some headsets that can be distributed as well. If that's the case, make your way back there and talk to one of the people at the door, and maybe they can hook you up with somebody with some headsets. All right. I'll be enforcing the five-minute time limit that we have for all speakers who wish to speak to an article. You'll remember that the people who actually present the articles have 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes, to discuss the importance and the various components of the article. And I expect that we'll move through this pretty quickly. If you're planning on presenting an amendment to any of the articles tonight, I just simply ask you to take a moment and try to write it out on a piece of paper, so that Sue Regan, our new acting clerk here in the town, welcome, Sue, so that she has it for our record. So if there's anything that you want to amend as we're going through the articles, please try to jot it down in writing. Obviously, the setup up here is a little bit different, but the same idea. We have Dan Knappick and Jay Toleman, our town attorney and the town administrator in the back here. We have our Board of Selectmen all spaced out here to my left. Again, we have Sue to my right. And then we have Ken Moody, who is the Chair of the Finance Committee. And where are your other Finance Committee members, Ken?
Sarah.
Okay, Sarah's here. Okay, good. We've got a couple of Finance Committees there, and I noticed that we've got some School Committee people here. And a lot of the town people who will be available to answer any questions that you might have about any of the articles are over there on the far side. So we've got everybody accounted for, and if you have any questions, I'm sure that we can find somebody that can get you the answer that you're looking for. And at the beginning of the warrant, the warrant that's printed ahead of time, we have at the very beginning of it, the customary opening paragraph, and it says, "To the Constable of the Town of Yarmouth in the County of Barnstable, greetings. In the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in the affairs of the town to meet at the Matiche's Middle School Building in said town Monday, the 22nd day of June 2020, at 6:00 PM in the evening, and then and there to act on the following articles." The original warrant had many more articles. We're going to be handling probably about 19 or 20 tonight, and you'll soon find out that the petitioned articles that are toward the end of the warrant are going to be dealt with in a different way, and we'll talk about that after the opening statements. At the end of the warrant... All right, and it finishes with a customary paragraph, "And also, in the name of the Commonwealth, you are directed to serve this warrant by posting attested copies thereof in four public places herein, fail not, and make return and affix this date. It is signed by the requisite number of the selectmen." And then our Constable, Paul Rooney, is certifying the warrant, and he says here, "I have served within warrant therein directed in accordance to law and town bylaws by posting the attested copies thereof as follows." And he posted it on June 12, 2020, at 9:35 AM at the Yarmouth Post Office; on June 11, 2020, at 4:15 PM at the South Yarmouth Post Office; on June 12, 2020, at 9:10 AM at the West Yarmouth Post Office; and finally, on June 12, 2020, at 9:20 AM at the Hyannis Park Comfort Station. Being four public places in the town, one on the north side of the town, three on the south side, and being one place in each post office district in the town. And by publication thereof in the register, a newspaper circulated in the town on June 11, 2020, being more than seven days before the day of the said town meeting." And it's signed by our town Constable, Paul Rooney. So with that, I'm going to give the return back to the clerk and declare that the annual town meeting for 2020 is officially open. It is 6:15 PM. And it's customary at this point to begin with a couple of opening statements. I usually start with the Board of Selectmen, so Selectman Stone, have you got something you'd like to begin with? Oh, you know what? Let's do the Pledge of Allegiance first. We're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance and then an invocation if we can. So please stand.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask you to just stay seated, standing for one more moment. This has been an extremely trying year for all of us, and I don't think any of us have gone untouched by either knowing somebody either who has lost their lives or suffered with COVID. And then in the course of just regular living and dying, we've lost an awful lot of good people in this town over the past year. So I'd just like to take a moment, if I can, of silence to remember all of those who are suffering and those who have passed this year. May their memory continue to inspire us to be good neighbors and good citizens in this town, and may their work ethic and their willingness to engage inspire us to be a stronger community of Yarmouth. Let's work together over the next several months and really try to help Yarmouth survive and excel through our businesses and through our residences and our community and our business leaders to get through this together. And we thank all of our first responders, the police, the fire, the town officials have done an amazing job, and I know you two have made an awful lot of sacrifices. So continue on, is all I can say, and you're not alone in this. We're in this together, and we're going to make it through it. Thank you. Please be seated. Okay, how about we start with an opening statement from the Board of Selectmen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On behalf of the entire Board of Selectmen, I wish to welcome you to the 2020 Yarmouth Annual Town Meeting. I would also like to thank you for attending this year's town meeting, a meeting like none before us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Today, we have before you a warrant with 23 articles. Due to our concern for everyone's health, we reduced the warrant articles to only those needed to ensure that the town can operate effectively in the upcoming year. With the impacts of COVID-19, we have prepared this budget to include an anticipated local receipt revenue reduction of approximately 33% and state aid revenue reduction of approximately 20%. The budget provides for essential town services and funding our two regional school district assessments, the Cape Tech School and the Dennis Yarmouth Regional School System. Our staff and volunteers have put a great deal of thoughtful consideration into the proposals that Town Meeting will act upon tonight. We appreciate the considerable efforts required to prepare the agenda and the work that will be required to implement the actions taken by this Town Meeting on these warrant articles. Finally, before we begin the business of the meeting, I want to thank our volunteers, our board members, commissioners, and those who staff all of the various committees in town. We are always in need of volunteers, so please consider applying for appointment by filling out a talent bank form. We thank all of you for coming and participating in the decisions that affect all of us who call Yarmouth our home. We look forward to your questions and your feedback on these proposals. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Selectman Stone. Ken Moody from the Finance Committee, do you have an opening statement you'd like to share?
Sure, thank you. I don't think I have to tell anybody how unprecedented these times are. You'll hear it 1,000 times, and I will guarantee you one thing, you'll always remember this meeting. And the Finance Committee also had to go through all the different changes and challenges this year, as you know, and I'm very pleased with the impact we've had. That being said, if you or anyone you know has an interest in joining in the next year or two, we have a couple openings on the Finance Committee, and I don't think there's ever been more of a time where we need talent. So I'm reaching out for that tonight. And again, thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Moody. And I look to the School Committee. Would you like to avail yourselves of an opening statement? You don't have to. Okay, all right, very good. All right, so those are the opening statements. That usually brings us to the first article, but we have a unique situation here where three of the articles that have been put on the warrant for this annual town meeting are petitioned articles. Those are the articles that are brought by citizens. And I understand that an agreement has been reached that rather than spend our time on them tonight, that they'll be moved to the fall meeting. And so I guess what I'd like to do is move them right up front, and if the people who sponsored the articles want to get up and make a motion to indefinitely postpone, we can dispatch them, and you can stay or go as you see fit. So on Article 21, do we have somebody who is going to speak to Article 21? I mean, is it possible for me just to continue these three, postpone these indefinitely? Can I just...
They can fail for lack of motion, or you could call for someone to take a motion. There's no...
Okay, good.
You could advance them for consideration, and then there being no motion, they would be postponed or fail for lack of motion.
Just so you understand, the people who petition an article, they have to go out and get signatures in order to get onto a town meeting, and they've done all that work already. So we kind of have a gentleman's agreement that they're not going to have to go through all that work again, but we're going to ask them to move them to the fall meeting. So I'd ask for a motion to indefinitely... Yes?
Mr. Moderator, it's Tracy Post, Board of Selectmen. I make a motion that we indefinitely postpone Articles 21, Article 22, and Article 23.
Motion is made?
Seconded.
Seconded. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen would recommend...
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Does the maker of the motion wish to add anything? All right, this is to indefinitely postpone the three last petitioned articles, 21, 22, and 23. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It passes by the requisite majority. All right, now that will bring us back to Article 1. And as I told you at the beginning, Article 1 had some last-minute changes to it. So in your seats, you should have found a little sheet with maybe three or four pieces of paper in it, and it has figures that we didn't have previously. So Article 1 is being moved by Selectman Stone of this Select Committee.
I move that the town vote to transfer an appropriated sum of money to provide additional funds for the fiscal year 2020 operating budget. DPW Septage Enterprise Fund for waste disposal, the amount of $100,000, and the source of that funding is Septage retained earnings. With respect to the Fire Department, for purposes of a purchase of an ambulance, the sum of $289,076, and the source of that funding is the Fire Reserve for Appropriation.
Okay, so Article 1 is moved and amended. Is there a second?
Second.
Is Board of Selectmen, would you like to...
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Mr. Stone, would you like to explain this?
With respect to the Septage transfer, the purpose of the article is to fund any budget shortages for the current year. The supplemental funding for the Septage Enterprise Fund is needed to cover a significant increase in sludge disposal costs due to the inability to access disposal sites in New England. The Septage plant retained earnings is sufficient to absorb these costs until a permanent solution can be found. With respect to the ambulance transfer, the Capitol Budget Committee in 2020 approved the purchase of a new ambulance to replace a 2009 ambulance with over 115,000 miles that has become unreliable. During the COVID-19-related revisions to the town budget, this item was deleted from the Capitol article but should not have been. The sum of $289,076 is requested from the Fire Reserve for Appropriation Fund. The fund presently is at $2,484,871. There is enough money in the fund, more than enough money in the fund, to cover the cost of the ambulance. Delivery of the ambulance is expected in the summer of 2020.
All right, thank you, Mr. Stone. All right, ladies and gentlemen, Article 1 is on the floor as amended. Does anybody have any questions, wish to make any comment? Seeing none, we'll move Article 1. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It passes unanimously. That brings us to Article 2, which is the town budget. So that's the second handout that you probably found in your seats. It's a booklet, and it has all of the various breakdowns of the expenses for the town. So I'm going to look to Mr. Stone to make the motion on Article 2.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm required to read a lengthy motion for Article 2 to identify for the record the funding sources of various line items in this article. The motion will be on the screen, so you may follow along. I move that the various sums under the column headed FINCOM FY21 be appropriated for their respective purposes, and to fund such article, raise the sum of $592,585 from Recreation Offset Receipts for CS-9 and 10, Recreation Division Offset Wages and Expenses. Transfer the sum of $10,000 from Polling Hour State Reimbursement Fund for MF10 Election Expenses. Transfer the sum of $25,000 from Wetlands Protection Fund for CD-1 Community Development Wages. Transfer the sum of $25,000 from Waterways Improvement Funds for CS3 Natural Resources Wages. Transfer the sum of $139,000 from Ferry Tax for CS3 Natural Resources Wages. Transfer the sum of $2,542 from DNR Space/Neuter Fund for CS3 Natural Resources Wages. Transfer the sum of $1,500,000 from Ambulance Reserve for Appropriation for PS6 Fire Department Wages. Transfer the sum of $1,724 from Health Funds for MI-3 Health Wages. Transfer the sum of $85,565 from Cemetery Funds for PW-15 Cemetery Wages. Transfer the sum of $24,338 from Sale of Land Funds for DS-1 Debt Service for a total
Okay, the article is moved. Is there a second? Okay, Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Okay, Mr. Stone, could you give us a brief explanation?
Thank you. The longstanding direction that the Board of Selectmen has provided to the town administrator is to prepare the town budget within the fiscal constraints of Proposition 2 1/2, and to provide the best possible services and facilities within those constraints. This balanced budget is based upon conservative revenue estimates due to the expected impact to our local receipts from the COVID-19 pandemic. All budgets have been reviewed in detail by the Finance Committee, which has recommended the budget as presented in the column on the far right of your warrant. The Board of Selectmen asks for your approval of this article.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Article 2 now is on the floor. For those of you who have been to town meeting before, you know that we try to break this up because it's a fairly large article, so we try to break it up by segments. So what we're going to do is take each heading, and this is on page 2. It begins with Elected General Government. And we'll take each heading and the things that are underneath it, the various categories, and vote on each one of those separately. If there's anything within the group that we're currently considering that you have a question about or you don't quite understand, I'm just going to ask you, after I introduce it, to raise your hand and say hold. So an example in elected general would be, say, hold E2, and then we'll vote on the rest of it, and then we'll come back, and I'd ask you to make your way to a microphone, and we'll deal with your specific question or concern, and then vote on the particular criteria or elements that you have questions about. Everybody okay with that? Okay, so we're going to start first with Elected General Government. That's a short one. It starts with E1, and it only goes down to E3. Anybody have any questions or concern regarding E1 through E3? Seeing none, we'll move those. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It passes unanimously. That brings us down to Town Administrator, and this one goes over to the second page, so you have to be careful. It goes GG1 all the way over to the second page to GG16. Take a minute and look at all of those, and does anybody have any questions or anything that they'd like to hold on?
Hold GG1.
Anybody else?
Hold GG5.
Anyone else? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to vote GG2, 3, 4, and then jump over to 6 through 16. All those in favor of those particular parts of Town Administrator Budget, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. That passes unanimously. Whoever had a question about GG1 and GG5, could you find your way to a microphone, please? I see Mr. Sullivan at the back, microphone, and I believe you were GG1.
GG1. I'd like clarification on the wages in regards to this office here. Six full-time.
Tom, hold on one second. Can we get that up a little bit so it's a little more audible?
Yeah, I'm not going to touch it.
Go ahead.
The wages are for six full-time people. I only remember four full-time, four full-time people in the Town Administrator's office, the Administrator, Assistant, and two Administrative Assistants. So where are the other two positions coming from?
I'm going to recognize Mr. Knappick.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I believe it was two years ago in a reorganization that was presented to the Board of Selectmen, there were two additional staff positions that reported to the Town Administrator's office, including a Human Resources Director and a Licensing Clerk that had formerly been in the Finance Department, now reports under the wages in the Town Administrator's office.
Okay, so they've been moved out of that office into your office?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. And who had GG5? Yes, ma'am.
Catherine Case, Section 5.
Precinct, ma'am?
Precinct 5.
Okay, thank you.
The only concern I have is the large increase between '19's actual and '20's supposed. Now, if it's because of COVID, I understand, but that's a big difference.
Mr. Knappick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. That item has been significantly revised upward as it relates to the COVID pandemic in case, in the event that we have to have staff reductions that might come down the line. So as part of our budget process, we work with the insurance company to identify this number. There's probably a little bit of additional room in there, but we just didn't know going into building the budget exactly what the impact was going to be to the operating staff of the town employees.
Okay, that's understandable, and pardon me, but I'm fairly new. So what happens when the end-of-the-year bill comes through and it's $15,000? Where does the $10,000 go?
So in the end of the year, if there's a surplus in a fund that has not been expended, it would return to the town in the fall in the form of certified free cash.
Okay, cool, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, the two items outstanding are GG1 and GG5. Anyone else have any questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move those two items together. All those in favor of GG1 and GG5, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It passes unanimously. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us over to Central Purchasing, which is just one item. Oh, wait a minute, nope, never mind. It's Municipal Finance. So we have MF1, and that goes over to the next page to MF10. So take a quick look at anything that's covered under Municipal Finance and see if you have any questions, any concerns. Anybody have a hold? Seeing none, we'll move municipal items, municipal finance items, MF1 through MF10. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Passes unanimously. That brings us now down to Community Development, and that's CD1, starting on page 3, and that's just 1 and 2. Anybody have any questions, any concerns about Community Development? Hold CD1. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, let's move CD2. All those in favor of CD2, raise your hand and say "aye."
Aye.
Those opposed, raise your hand and say "nay." It passes unanimously. Could, yes, ma'am, on CD1?
Vida Morris, Precinct 1. What specific functions are involved in this Community Development Department?
Who wants to take that? You?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. In the Community Development Department, that consists of the Community Development Director, the Staff Assistant for Old Kings Highway, the Staff Assistant for the Affordable Housing Trust, this Town Planner. Additionally, also, the Zoning Board of Appeal Staff Assistant, the Conservation Coordinator, and the Staff Assistant to Community Development, which is a full-time administrative position, and there's also a part-time administrator for the Conservation Department.
Well, go ahead.
Most of those functions just don't seem to be involved in Community Development. To me, it would be, you know, trying to develop some economic development or what have you.
The Economic Development Planner also reports out of that budget as well.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. All right, any other questions on CD1? Seeing none, we'll raise CD1. All those in favor, raise your hand and say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say "nay." It passes unanimously. That brings us now, ladies and gentlemen, to Page 4, Community Services. That starts with Item CS1, and goes over to the next page, Page 5, to CS10. Take a look at those. Anyone wish to have a hold?
Yes, CS9 and 10.
Can't hear you, ma'am.
CS9 and 10.
CS9, CS10. Anyone else? All right, let's move the rest of them. All those in favor of Community Services, Items CS1 through CS8, raise your hand and say "aye." All opposed, raise your hand and say "nay." They pass unanimously. Ms. Morris, can you make your way to the microphone, and what are your questions with regard to the two items?
Well, on CS9, it's primarily that, but what is this? Two people are earning $441,000 between them.
Mr. Knappick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. That's two full-time staff assistants and the entire part-time or seasonal employees that staff the beaches, the camps, and all the other activities that go on as part of the Recreation Department.
Well, in other words, this was misstated, because the way it says here, it says, in parentheses, "two full-time employees, $441,000."
Well, that's because we only list the full-time employees. There are literally dozens and dozens and dozens of seasonal and part-time employees within that line.
But in other categories, they say, you know, "part-time," because this, really, and actually, the expenses are kind of high, too, I would say.
Okay, so your point is that it might be a little bit clearer for people if the part-time positions were listed?
Well, no, all you have to say is plus part-time, or something that you do in many other places, because this leaves the impression that two people are earning $441,000.
Okay, I think it's fair comment. While I've got you, what's your comment with regard to CS10?
It just seems, the expenses seem to be very high, too.
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, please.
Just for clarification, the "E" in FTE stands for equivalence, not employees. It could be any number of employee adding up to the number of hours that would equal two full-time positions.
So full-time equivalent?
Equivalence, not employees, Vida.
All right, we've raised the questions, and they've been answered for CS9 and CS10. Any other questions? We'll move them now. All those in favor of CS9 and CS10, raise your hand and say "aye." All opposed, raise your hand and say "nay." It passes by the requisite majority. That now brings us down in the middle of Page 5 to Public Safety, and that begins with Item PS1, and ends with PS7, but you'll see the totals are actually on Page 6. Take a look at that. Deals with Police and Fire. Anyone have any holds? Hearing none, we'll move Public Safety, PS1 through PS7. All those in favor, raise your hand and say "aye." All opposed, raise your hand and say "nay." It passes unanimously. All right, that brings us now to Municipal Inspections, on Page 6. That goes from MI1 all the way down to MI6. Take a look. Any questions? Anybody wish to hold anything?
Hold MI5, please.
MI5. Anyone else? All right, we're going to move on MI1, 2, 3, 4, and 6. All those in favor of those items, raise your hand and say "aye." All opposed, raise your hand and say "nay." They carry unanimously. Ms. Morris, do you want to speak to MI5, please?
Yes, well, this is a pleasant surprise. The Human Services has gone from $76,000 to $6,000, and I just wonder how that was achieved.
Mr. Knappick?
Yes, Mr. Moderator, the entire item of grants that we give out under that line was deleted essentially, and with the idea that, at the Fall Town Meeting, the items can be reinstalled if the financial situation of the town improves. Within those grants, we generally give out grants to the visiting nurses, to the Society for the Blind, and food pantry, and things of this nature, but for this purpose, for Spring Town Meeting, we felt that the financial situation of the town was such that we wouldn't, we weren't able to finance those at the levels they'd seen in the past, so we'd hold till the fall.
Okay. Moving now on MI5. All those in favor, raise your hand and say "aye." All opposed, raise your hand and say "nay." It passes unanimously. That brings us now to Municipal Operations on Page 7, consisting of two items, MO1 and MO2. Any holds? Seeing none, we'll move MO1 and MO2. All in favor, raise your hand and say "aye." All opposed, raise your hand and say "nay." It carries unanimously. That brings us now to Public Works, Page 7, halfway down, and that goes from PW1 all the way over to the next page, PW16. Take a minute, look at those. See if you have any questions. Anyone wish to hold on any of the items from PW1 to PW16?
PW8.
Loudly, please?
PW8.
PW2? Anyone else? All right, so we're going to move the other items at this point. That's PW1, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, and 16. All those in favor, raise your hand and say "aye."
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say "nay." It carries unanimously. On PW2, was that you, Ms. Morris?
No.
Jen, sir, could you make your way to a microphone, please?
Thank you.
Your name, please?
My name is Abe Casperian.
Yep.
And I have a couple of documents I wanted to produce to the clerk to be added into the record as to my concerns over this item, if that's okay?
Go right ahead.
And how would I be able to get them down to the clerk?
Are these amending, demotion in any way? Or are these just for the clerk's information for the future?
It's for amending and review, and for the information of the clerk as well.
All right, yes, we need to see the documents if you're going to be amending something. Why don't you come down here, Mr. Casperian, and then you can speak from this microphone All right, what's your concern first, Mr. Casperian?
It deals with Ware Road. And we, there's a number of us, and I think I sent an email to the Chairman of the Selectmen this morning, also have copies of what I emailed him that I felt we need to discuss to be added in or amended to the expense budget for the Public Works Department. And that being, we are looking for a speed control bump on Ware Road at a specific location on Ware Road. I took photographs of the area, and the concerns that we have, I articulated them in the documents that I have to present to each one of the Selectmen and for the record itself. One of the other residents from Ware Road is here today to talk if the body felt desirable to hear him. But basically, we have a stream or a small river that goes across Ware Road. We have deer, we have other wildlife that is out in that area. There are really no streetlights in that area. They are, since there was an introduction of the double-yellow line down Ware Road, it has turned into a racetrack. It stretches from Great Western all the way down to 6A, and we have large concerns. The community is transmogrified over time. We have children in the community now, we have younger families who have pets, who walk their dogs, and the racetrack has got to stop. We don't know any other way of doing it, other than to add a speed control bump in that area to slow the traffic down, and inform them on both sides of the speed bump by signage to reduce their speed. To have an officer sit there and try to control the traffic would be an astronomical cost. A speed bump would take care of that. So we're asking that certain money be set aside for that expense, but in the interim time, so it's in the budget for this year, that somebody from the Highway Department or DPW come down and review the area. One, we have the money to take care of it. Two, you have some verification from Internal Works and Public Works to review the area that's in question. One gal almost got hit by a car. Last year, we had a Jeep that overturned on Ware Road, nearly did overturn, the whole vehicle overturned. So all of those things cost the town a lot more money in first responder costs. This is a way to reduce that. People will slow down, they'll be informed, and they won't hurt their car by trying to speed at 40 to 50 miles an hour down that stretch of road. So if I can, I'd like to turn some of the material over to you.
Point of information? I need you to speak up, I can't.
This seems to be beyond the scope of a line item which is referencing only snow and ice.
Well, I'm going to have Mr. Colby hopefully deal with this question, who's in the best position to. But, Mr. Casperian, you've made a point about what you'd like to see happen. You also mentioned at the beginning that you had a motion to amend. What are you hoping to amend?
The amendment would be to set aside the money to facilitate that speed bump being installed. That's the amendment.
Is Mr. Colby, I'm going to ask you to see if you can help direct us a little bit on this question.
Yeah, I'm happy to take a look at this. If he wants to give me a call or an email tomorrow or later this week, this morning is the first time I heard of this issue. I will certainly take a look. We do have a traffic committee that gets together that's made up of town staff, police, fire, DPW, town engineer, that reviews all these things. I think that there certainly can be, and there has been in the past, opportunities for other solutions. We've got a very talented group of town staff that can recommend suggestions on the way to best deal with these things, both from a capital as well as an operational perspective, and I'd suggest that's the route to go with this particular request.
Okay. Do you understand what is?
I do understand. My only problem is, I've owned that property since 1990. This, the accident that I'm talking about, was reported by the Police Department, the Fire Department were there, and no one has taken a look at it until now, when we bring it to the attention of the town, which we brought prior to this.
Is this something that you've just brought to the town's attention?
No, no, this was brought prior, and no one has come out to look at it. So, I'm not going to say it's completely disingenuous, but it's not completely factual either. So I would look forward to seeing that happen. Obviously, I don't have a problem, but at the same time, I'd like to set aside enough money, so if that committee and that group says, "Yes, we do need some sort of control, and a speed bump might be of assistance," that there's money in the budget to cover that outlay to make sure that correction is made financially. So those are the issue for me as first.
All right, so you said you want to make a motion to amend. Could I hear that, please?
Yes. Motion to amend to include a significant, sufficient amount of money to put a speed control bump onto Ware Road by the water crossing.
I'm going to ask the town's attorney, do we need a specific amount of money to be part of this motion to amend?
There's two issues with the motion to amend. First of all, it's not, there would have to be a significant amount of money up or down, and second, the town meeting doesn't have the authority to dictate what would be done within that budget line item. If he wanted to increase the budget of that line item, he could certainly do that, but then it's up to the DPW and the Select Board on how to allocate those resources. And of course, any increase in money would affect potentially other articles eventually, but it would be a legal motion to increase it, but he can't dictate to Mr. Colby how it necessarily be expended.
Okay, Mr. Casperian, did you understand that there's two issues? One is that we cannot dictate how the money is spent, and the second one is, you can add to the amount of money, but at this point, it seems to me that you don't even have figures to ballpark what this might cost. I'm wondering if you, go ahead.
To address that issue, I believe that the cost, and I've checked with a few folks that install bumps like that, it would be about $20,000 to install a speed bump control with the signage. So we're not talking an awful lot of money when we talk about the fact that somebody could lose their life, or someone hits a set of deer, which I've come up late at night, and there's deer crossing over. They might hit that deer. I know the area, so I slow down. I am very cautious about that. Other people who use it as a cut-through from Great Western all the way to 6A, since the double line has been put in, has been a speedway, and that, I think, is, and maybe some signage with mileage, a speed limit, reduce the amount of speed, put a speed bump in. I don't think you're going to spend more than 20 grand to get the job done.
All right, so ladies and gentlemen, at this point, we have a motion to increase PW2 by $20,000, making that last figure $450,323,000. There's a motion on the floor to amend the budget. Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Moderator, if I could, please?
Who am I speaking? Is this?
This is the Town Administrator.
Oh, Mr. Knappick?
Just so the town meeting would know, that if we were to increase the budget by that sum of money, a corresponding deduction in the operating budget would have to be decided upon, such that they would accommodate the overall appropriation decided this evening.
Right, anytime you raise up one category, you need to take it from somewhere else. Does Finance Committee wish to add anything to that?
No.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, if I could?
Mr. Colby, go ahead.
If I could comment briefly on the cost of the capital piece of that, this is the type of project we would have in our road maintenance funds, which are being deferred at this time to the Fall Town Meeting. This wouldn't typically be an operating budget. As the Town Administrator indicated, you'd have to determine what gets reduced out of this particular budget or gets impacted. Most of this particular expense, the PW2, is fuel, streetlights, things of that nature, and are relatively fixed cost.
Mr. Casperian, it's up to you. Mr. Kasperian, it's up to you. You can accept Mr. Colby's offer and see if you can work cooperatively with him and get it into the fall meeting, or we can go forward on your motion to amend.
No, I think working cooperatively with him would be a good start, and we can see where we can go from there, and that would be fine. I would accept that as a reasonable compromise, and I'm only concerned about public safety and the people in the community. So if we can work together to find that safety for the people in the community and the animals in the community, that'd be great.
I appreciate your cooperation and your participation. Thank you.
Absolutely, not a problem. May I be able to?
Sure. Why don't you give it to the clerk, and we'll make sure it gets into the right hands. All right, so on PW-2, it's going to go as is. All those in favor of PW-2, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It passes unanimously. And Ms. Morris, I believe you had a question on PW-8?
Yes. $156,000 under snow and ice. What is this all about? I don't think we had one flake of snow this past winter, that's for sure, and even the last two winters or so. I don't understand these, what are these expenses?
Who can speak to this? Mr. Knappick?
I would ask Mr. Colby to come back to the microphone.
You getting some exercise tonight?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. The real brief explanation is the actuals you see in the left column are from FY '19. The mild winter was in FY '20, and they're not reflected in these numbers, and I can tell you it was significantly lower than what FY '19 was. It was a relatively mild winter. And hopefully that continues next year.
I couldn't follow that. Can anybody? I mean, these are fictitional figures?
The mild year that we just had is not reflected in the FY '19 numbers. That's FY '20. It'll be in next year's program warrant.
But even for FY '19 and '20, that's, those are very high figures. We did not have a winter where we had snow plowing going on in the last three or four years.
Mr. Moderator, if I could?
Go ahead, Mr. Knappick.
So snow and ice is the one account that we can do a deficit spend on, and the state requires that you do not set the appropriation lower in the year upcoming than it was the previous year. So this is the same, we're carrying the same number through. And so what ends up happening if we have a tough winter, we ask for a supplemental appropriation in the spring town meeting. We didn't happen to have to have that this year, but I believe in the previous number of years we've had.
So even from last year, from FY '19, that any of the money that was there, that was excess money, did that go back to somewhere for other purposes?
The, out of that expense item, we pay contractors, we pay for sand, we pay for road salt and chemicals that treat the road. So when we have an actual number on it, that was how much was spent by the, on the vendors to pay all the vendors that we pay out of the expense item, including equipment.
Who have, and they were on standby, basically? I mean, do they have some kind of a contract, even if they don't end up working, they will be paid?
Well, just recall that we don't know going into every winter what we're going to expect, so we have to preorder sand and road salt chemicals, and I have enough equipment in good order to make sure that we're ready for the winter. So you don't really know every year that goes on, what you're going to end up having for an actual expenditure.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. We're going to move PW-8. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Carries unanimously. That brings us now to the last debt service, DS-1 and DS-2. Any questions? Any holds? Hearing none, we're going to move debt service, DS-1 and DS-2. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Carries unanimously. That gets us through the town budget, ladies and gentlemen. I do want to point out that this year and the year prior, the town made significant efforts to make videos that were available on the town website that explained some of this information. And of course, you know, this warrant is available for several weeks ahead of a town meeting. So anytime that you have questions or don't fully understand why we're spending a certain amount of money on a particular item, you know, the town is always available to help you understand what makes up the figures and why they are what they are. So it's fine to ask the questions at town meeting to help inform other people, but also, it's sometimes a little bit easier if you can get the information upfront so that you don't take up unnecessary time, and I appreciate that. So that brings us now to Articles, yes? Yes, sir.
E-2 and E-3.
I don't know, I might have been napping.
And the same question on MO-1 and MO-2.
Do you have that?
I want to make sure I have the same, the full document here.
What page do you want, sir? What page do you want?
Page 2.
Oh, I took care of my salary. All right. Yes, those were all covered, sir. Page 2. Yeah, we went MF-1 all the way down to MF-10. And what was your concern? There was EO something?
MO-1 and MO-2.
MO-1.
Page 8.
Page 8. We did it. I'm not seeing MO.
It passed, 1 and 2 passed, MO-1 and 2 at 6:43.
Okay, I apologize. These documents are different. That's why you're looking at, you're looking at something different than I am. But the clerk has it, the clerk has it that we covered it, and the town manager has it, administrator has it, we covered it. But thank you for pointing it out. I appreciate it. All right, ladies and gentlemen, that brings us now to Article 3. Article 3 is being moved by Michael Stone, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I move Article 3 as printed in the warrant.
Articles moved. Seconded on my left, Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Mr. Stone, you want to tell us about this one?
This article is the operating budget for the Gulf Division and is funded by Gulf fees and revenue, as well as $225,000 from Gulf reserves.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, Article 3 is on the floor. Anyone have any questions? Have any concerns? Seeing none, we'll move Article 3. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It carries unanimously. That brings us now to Article 4. Article 4 is the Water Enterprise Budget, again being moved by Chairman Michael Stone.
Thank you, Ms. Moderator. I move Article 4 as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded on my left, Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Selectmen Stone?
The fiscal year 2021 Water Operating Budget provides funding for the operation of the Yarmouth Water System. This involves the production, treatment, and distribution of water throughout the town. These funds are directed towards continuing to improve the quality of water provided, customer relations, and providing a high level of reliability to the water supply and distribution system to ensure the town has safe drinking water and the required water flows for firefighting. All Water Division expenses will be covered by water fees. The Water Department budget is fully funded by water fees, which have not been raised in over 20 years. We recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Our article is on the floor, Gulf Water Operating Budget. Anybody have any questions? Any concerns? All right, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It carries unanimously. That brings us now to Article 5, being moved by Selectmen Eric Tolly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 5 as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded on my left, Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Mr. Tolly?
Thank you. The fiscal year 2021 Septage Enterprise Budget provides funding for the operation of the Yarmouth Septic Treatment Facility. This facility maintains an environmentally safe septic disposal option for the community. This is accomplished by processing of septic waste in an efficient and cost-effective manner in a Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection-approved facility. The costs are fully covered by fees charged to contractors that dispose of septic waste at the plant. The enterprise fund, like the others, is fully supported by fee revenue. We recommend approval.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Article 5 is on the floor. Any questions? Any concern? Seeing none, let's move Article 5. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It passes unanimously. That brings us to Article 6, again being moved by Selectmen Tolly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article 6 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded on my left, Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Selectmen Tolly?
I will defer to the school district for the explanation.
Okay, Mr. Tierney?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would actually like to make an amendment to Article 6.
Okay.
I'd like to amend the number from $35,874,453 that was printed in the warrant to the following, $35,874, no, I'm sorry, $35,874,219, which is a reduction of $234.
Okay, so ladies and gentlemen, the article was put on the floor as printed, it was seconded, and now we have someone from the school committee offering an amendment to lower the number. So we have to deal with the amendment first. Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Board of Selectmen? Do you agree with the?
I would assume that any reduction would be unanimously recommended.
Okay. Finance Committee?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Tierney, could you tell us a little bit about this?
Absolutely. The reduction is, even though a small one, was an adjustment in the debt services that was found through the town accountant, working with Ken Jenks, who's the assistant superintendent. So we wanted to bring that to the town for a correct number. It was just an adjustment that needed to be made to make it a proper number. This increase this year is approximately 1.6% higher than last year's budget, which is under the two and a half, proposition, two and a half percent. And this reflects the amended regional agreement that everybody voted on last year, and we thank you very much for that. Teachers, students, the staff, the food services have done a tremendous job through this very trying time. They've all worked hard, they've all learned to adapt and adjust beautifully. The schools are, we're running well, we're just, we're done, and we're looking forward to the, looking forward to next year and seeing how that will go. But we hope you support this budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tierney. So first, we have to vote on the actual amendment. So all those who are in favor of the amendment, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It passes unanimously. Anybody wish to speak now to the school budget as amended? Seeing none, we'll move Article, yes, Mr. Sullivan at the back?
I didn't understand. Tom Sullivan, Precinct 1. Couple questions here for the school committee. First of all, I understand some of these school districts on the Cape were able to renegotiate bus contracts. In other words, to lower the amount of money because the students weren't in school. I understand Cape Cod Tech was one of them that did that. And I'm seeing an increase here. So did you try to renegotiate the contract to lower it since the school buses were not running, or did we pay for bus services that weren't used?
Is there somebody from the school department that would like to? Mr. Jenks? Yes, please. Mr. Jenks is the assistant superintendent now at the DY School System.
Good afternoon, Ken Jenks, Assistant Superintendent. The answer is yes. For this cycle, there were less miles, obviously we weren't using the buses, and so we worked, reworked different rates, the invoices are significantly less, and we saw savings. The practical reality is we'll be back next year, knock on wood, starting in September to full bus service. So we need to carry the regular number that the contract without pandemic adjustments would carry.
Mr. Sullivan, further question?
Yes. I've also been reading statewide that the school budgets, because of the state shortfall, we're looking statewide money. In April, there was a statewide shortfall on tax income of $2.3 billion. In May, the first half committed $1.3 billion. So schools across the state are now cutting budgets by 10%. Have you considered any consideration of cutting your budget to possibly offset the shortfalls that looks like they're going to be coming? Have you, because otherwise, will you be back in September looking for more money if you don't get the money? It doesn't show that here.
I believe that's a school committee question. If I may, I think some of the conversation, and then I'll.
There's been a lot of layoffs of school teachers, custodial staff, or whatever, on several cities and towns across the state.
I would believe every school district approaches this differently.
Yeah.
And, you know, being a regional district is different from being a town and a school system. Part of the practical reality, I know there has been conversation about, do you cut before you know you need to make cuts? Or do you hold on? And the committee has made it clear, we're not filling most of the positions that are currently open that would provide some of that adjustment room. But again, certainly from my perspective, that's a policy decision. However, that's up for the committee, but I don't believe it's been on the agenda for a discussion at this point because it seemed early to lay off people before you were told there was a reduction in aid.
I'm not asking if they would be laid off, I'm just asking if they are preparing for shortfalls, and they have a long-term planning.
Is there a long-term plan, considering all the unknowns that exist at this point? Yes, Mr. Morris. You'll notice that some of our firefighters are wiping down the mics after people speak. We're very, very grateful for you guys being here tonight and taking care of us, ensuring our safety. Thank you.
Phil Morris, Precinct 4, member of the school committee. The short answer to the question is yes. We, hardly a meeting has gone by without knowing that we were going to be facing some sort of adjustments. At this point, the guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, from the financial guidance we're getting from the state, the practical policy information from the Mass Association of School Committees, Mass Association of School Superintendents, does not indicate we should be cutting before we know what the remuneration from the state is going to be, inasmuch as we will probably face those decisions as the state funding comes to bear on the entire state budget. Reality is that we don't have any taxing power. We are totally dependent upon the town meeting for most of our budget and reimbursement for expenses for transportation and additional support from the state. We are not anticipating, we are anticipating some adjustments to be made, but for the budget to start as of July 1, we do need to have a basis of keeping the present programs going and the present staff. We're not trying to hide the fact that we may have to make some decisions, but at this point, we won't even have a state revenue picture officially until next February. So our preparation is going to be toward the fall into the winter in terms of budgetary considerations and its impact on programs. We do have a support from the governor's budgets on keeping the educational quality at the level we presently have. But inasmuch as our meetings for the school committee for the last two months have been over remote screen time, we don't have an opportunity to have those deep discussions. We are dependent upon the administration to transfer to our knowledge base and on our emails and our other reports what is coming from the state. As a member of the Board of the Massachusetts School Committees, I know that they're not encouraging people to start cutting budgets and laying people off now. encouraging people to start cutting budgets and laying people off now because we don't really have an idea how we can meld the programs and the staffing of those programs. And we're still trying to figure out with discussions from the state level how we're going to measure what the impact has been on our students with virtual learning. You just can't maintain some of the same programs at the same level. We do, we have authorities, we need waivers if we're going to do less of some programs based on finances or based on time on learning. So it isn't the fact that our budget needs, doesn't show that. We have to have a operating platform or threshold, but you can be sure, we know that the state's facing difficulties, as are the local municipalities, and we are beholden to both. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Sullivan, a wrap-up question? Are you all set?
Just the last thing on Mr. Jenks' statement that there was some minor adjustments because they weren't, you know, going to school, using the buses. Was the total of that amount of savings applied to the 2021 budget?
No.
No, it wasn't?
No.
It should be.
Mr. Sullivan, thank you. We got some good information through those questions, I appreciate it. All right, we're going to move Article Six with the amended number. The amended number is thirty-five million, eight-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand, two-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. All those who are in favor of Article Six as amended, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It carries unanimously. That now brings us to Article Seven. Article Seven is the Cape Cod Technical High School, being moved by Selectman Tolly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Seven as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded on my left, Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
And Mr. Tolly?
I would defer to Superintendent Sandborn for the explanation.
Mr. Sandborn. Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Thank you so much. I just, I want to explain the, in the warrant, there's been a change with regard to, that's including our debt payment, the four million number you see in the warrant.
I was wondering about that.
So the breakdown is two million, six-hundred-and-ninety-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-eleven dollars for operating.
What, give me that again.
Two million, six-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars, two, ninety-seven thousand dollars, eight-hundred-and-eleven.
Eight-hundred-and-eleven, okay.
And then the debt, which is a declining debt payment over 20 years, was one million, three-hundred-and-ninety-two thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars for a total of what you see in the warrant, four million, ninety-two oh seven.
Thank you, that helps explain that big jump.
And I know Chris Greeley made that very clear in her video, but I wanted everybody in attendance to know that, so...
Do you want to tell us anything about the, the budget, or...
It's a 2.7% increase. Over the previous year, assessments went up 2.6. Overall, it, we had 40 more students. This is after several years of our assessment to the town of Yarmouth going down because of enrollment changes, but this year we had an increase of, I believe, 30 students from Yarmouth, so the assessment did go up, the operating assessment did go up a lot more than...
Progress of the school at this point?
Oh, progress of the school is great, it's about 92% complete. Our parking lot looks like the surface of the moon, and we're very eager to get in there hopefully by the end of July at the latest and start school, whatever school looks like in September, in the new facility. So very excited about the future of Cape Cod Tech. I want to thank Nathan Ladley and Eric Tolly, who sit on our school building committee, and I want to thank Chris Greeley, and I want Norm Michel for serving on our school committee from the town of Yarmouth.
Thank you very much, Mr. Sandborn. Article Seven is now on the floor. Does anybody have any questions or concerns? Seeing none, we'll move Article Seven. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That brings us now to Article Eight, the capital budget, again being moved by Selectman Tolly.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Eight with the following amendments. Town hall attic insulation to be paid for by FEMA reimbursement funds, fifty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-twelve dollars and ten cents. Bridgewater University Building roof repair also to be paid by FEMA reimbursement funds, fifty-seven thousand dollars even. The second, the third and fourth line items, townwide OSHA compliance and training to be paid from free cash, remains the same at 30,000. Townwide vehicle and equipment maintenance also to be paid out of free cash, remains the same at 100,000, for a total of 238,812 dollars and 10 cents.
All right, article is moved and seconded on my left, Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Mr. Tolly, you want to explain this one?
I will, thank you. Each year, the Capital Budget Committee, or CBC, appointed by the Finance Committee, reviews and evaluates requests for capital projects and equipment submitted by all town departments. This article contains lists of recommended expenditures for routine capital projects, equipment and vehicles funded by taxes, roadway and stormwater improvements funded by taxes, waste management capital funded by recycling revenue, golf course equipment funded by golf revenues and retained earnings, and fire department vehicles and life safety equipment funded by ambulance revenue. In addition to these amounts, supplemental funding for needed maintenance projects from other available town funds, FEMA reimbursement and free cash, for example, have also been consolidated into this article for consideration. The original proposed capital budget appropriation will be deferred to a future town meeting due to the COVID-19 budget concerns.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Tolly. Article Eight is now on the floor, as amended. Anyone have any questions, any concerns? If you would, sir, if you can just make your way to one of the microphones, even in the front here, if you want to do that. I saw Ms. Morris, did you put your hand up? Anybody else who has a question, please make your way to a microphone. We'll recognize this gentleman, oh, Joe, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Go ahead, sir.
Joe Goldstein, Precinct Five. More than a question, I think it's important for the town to understand that we normally would pass a capital budget of approximately 1.5 million dollars. That has now been reduced to 387? And the issue here is that this is money that has been requested by departments, was passed by the Capital Budget Committee, I believe at one time was passed by the Finance Committee, but as an easy and expeditious way of making our budget look better than it really is, we've removed it from the budget. On top of that, we had passed an override for 1.1 million dollars for highway maintenance. That too has been eliminated from our budget. Both of these are going to come back to us at much higher costs in the future. You're not going to be able to replace 1.2 million and 1.5 million overnight. It's going to take many years to do so. Meanwhile, our infrastructure will deteriorate, our roads will deteriorate, and as I said, what we're doing is taking the easy way out instead of what would be a much more difficult scenario, which would mean we would have to attack the number of employees that we have and with our general services in order to get a budget that would make sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Yes, Ms. Morris in the back.
Yeah, I'd like an explanation of how the Bridgewater roof repair was reduced by almost three-quarters. How does that work? I don't quite understand.
So, Mr. Moderator, we...
Mr. Knappick.
That building is, was struck by damage from the tornado, and over the course of many repairs through an insurance claim, more of the roof was repaired through an insurance claim than we had originally anticipated. Further, when we went to print on the warrant, we didn't have a hard number because the project hadn't received its estimates from contractors, yet we now, because so much time has gone by since when we prepared this to now, we have an estimate in hand, and that was very good news that it was substantially reduced.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morris. Seeing nobody else at a mic, we're going to move Article Eight as amended. All those in favor of Article Eight as amended, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It passes by the requisite majority. All right, that brings us now to Article Nine, and that is being moved by Selectman Tracy Post.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town raise and appropriate $275,000 for salary and wage adjustments for fiscal year 2021 to fund collective bargaining agreements settled or to be settled.
Article is moved. Seconded on my left, Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Ms. Post? Are you doing the explanation?
Article Nine will fund town employees settled or to be settled collective bargaining agreements. The town strives to settle contracts that are fair to the employees and also allows the town to stay within the constraints of Proposition Two-and-a-half.
Okay, thank you. All right, Article Nine is on the floor. Anyone have any questions, any concerns? Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, I need further explanation. Every year, or every other year, we get these articles here about collective bargaining, but we don't have any clue what it's about. The selectmen ought to discuss, after they agree on the agreement, what they've agreed to, these contracts. So what is actually the specific of what we're voting on? Is there a pay raise involved, health insurance? Which ones is this? What union is it in town? We have no idea what we're voting on. The 200,000, you know, that's a lot of money, and it's even more with other departments, but we don't know. I think in the future, the town should be prepared to break down what they've done on collective bargaining. We, you have to by law. We as voters are not bound by collective bargaining. So if the voters of this town decide not to fund, you have to go back and redo your contracts. It comes across to me and a few other people, well, you're bound by this. No, we're not. So I'd like to have just a little bit more explanation of what we're spending our money on. That's all.
Mr. Sullivan, we don't discuss our negotiations in public until they're settled, and, excuse me, once the contracts are settled, they're all for public knowledge and they're voted on in public, in public, in our packet, so they're available to everybody.
But you don't discuss the packet at a public meeting? I have, I watch the meetings. It's in your packet. Not everything in your packets discussed at public meetings. And when you do this, it's not being, you should at least give an anonymization of what you've agreed to. I'm not asking you to disclose what you do in collective bargaining, I understand that's a state law, you can't. You're bound to do it in a closed session. But once that closed session is done, you must, you should be releasing it. That's all I'm saying. I mean, we have an idea, you know, we should have an idea of what we're actually voting on. You know, the salaries, what percentage of an increase, how many years, stuff like that. It's only fair, only fair to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Anyone want to follow up at all?
No, as I said, all agreed-upon contracts are for public knowledge, they're all voted on in public and given to the public, so there's nothing to hide on any contract that has been settled.
Okay, thank you, Selectman Post. All right, anyone else? Seeing none, we'll move on Article Nine. All in favor of Article Nine, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It carries unanimously. That brings us now over to Article Ten. Article Ten is the Tourism Revenue Preservation Fund, again being moved by Selectwoman Tracy Post.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Ten as printed in the warrant.
Seconded on my left, Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Selectman Post?
The purpose of the fund is to enable the town to invest in programs and projects that enhance the community and strengthen the town as an attractive center for tourism. Funding is overseen by the Community and Economic Development Committee and used to stimulate our local tourism economy through funding for special events, marketing, and physical improvements. These efforts support local businesses and benefit local residents by growing commercial property and excise tax receipts. The amount of the appropriation represents the sum of two components. 315,163 dollars represents 25% of the estimated motel tax receipts in excess of 1,585,000 dollars for FY '20. 64,116 dollars represents 10% of the estimated meals tax receipts for FY '19. 379,279 dollars is the total of these two amounts. The motel tax allocation is required by Special Act, Special Legislation Act adopted by town meeting and approved by the state legislature. The meals tax allocation is a practice established when town meeting voted first to authorize the local adoption of the meals and motel tax. We urge the voter's support of this article.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Article Ten is on the floor. Questions, comments? Seeing none, we'll move Article Ten as printed. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It carries unanimously. Brings us now to Article Eleven, roadway construction, Phase One, again being moved by Selectwoman Tracy Post.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Eleven as printed in the warrant and to fund such article. I think they missed a part here in this motion, so I just want to make sure to see if the town will appropriate. I don't think we need that. I think I'll just move Article Eleven as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded on my left. Finance, Select Board?
The Board of Selectmen recommends.
And Finance?
Recommend.
Okay, Selectwoman Post?
Hold on one second.
Mr. Moderator, if I could, in Article Eleven, in the warrant, the item is fully explained as it relates, it's asking for borrowing authorization?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so you're saying it needs to be two-thirds vote?
Two-thirds vote, correct.
Very good, okay. All right, so Selectwoman Post, would you like to speak to this a little bit?
Yep. This article allows the town to proceed with design, engineering, and permitting of Phase One of the proposed wastewater collection system. This authorization also allows the town to coordinate some construction activities with the Route 28 and Mass Department of Transportation-funded projects that are planned to begin over the next few years. By approving this article, the town would be able to fund the engineering and procure the materials needed to participate with the Mass DOT on projects. This allows the town to save significant money as the DOT will be providing the funds for the roadwork upgrades and restoration. Furthermore, working in conjunction with the Mass DOT allows the town to move forward with its Phase One collection system construction in a timely manner, avoiding a five-year construction moratorium on parts of Route 28 that will be in place once the state completes the work of their projects.
All right, very good. Article Eleven is on the floor. Any questions, any comment? Yes, sir, Mr. Sullivan at the back microphone.
I'm wearing out this microphone. I'm going to move to amend the article, that this go to a town-wide vote before it's approved, because you're asking for bonding, and I believe that that should be done first. The town vote should take a vote, town-wide ballot question, or whether or not we go forth with this.
All right, I want to run that by the town attorney. Is that customary process?
Because there is a bonding issue involved with this.
If it's not a debt exclusion, the ballot question is not required, and it does not appear to be a debt exclusion, so a ballot question would not be required. It's just generic borrowing. If someone wants to add an additional contingency, that it go to a referendum, that's their prerogative to do that as a, as a motion, but if he's suggesting that it's required, it is not.
Mr. Moderator, if I could add to that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Knappick.
So as many folks know in the audience, over the last few years, we've been working on a finance recovery plan for the wastewater solution in the town of Yarmouth. Included within that plan were a number of different funding vehicles, including sales tax related to the short-term rental legislation. tax related to the short-term rental legislation that was passed, also included funding sources from the newly-created Cape Cod Water Protection Trust. And along with the original plan for Town Meeting 2020, we had a proposal prepared that would also allow for the Community Preservation Act to exempt the $100,000 of the first $100,000 of property in the development of a wastewater infrastructure trust fund to pre-fund any obligation. So within the recovery plan that the Wastewater Advisory Committee had worked on, there was not going to be a request for a debt exclusion to fund the wastewater operation. And this is only such that we have borrowing authorization to participate as a partner with Mass DOT in Phase One, which will begin relatively soon, and we need to have materials in place if we're going to be able to participate.
Mr. Moderator?
That's the explanation, sir. You are still?
I have questions. I think we're putting a cart before the horse. The town should vote, whether or not we continue with this. All right, we're going bit by bit. The town voted, close to nine years now, against it. You're using this study based on the mass actuary study, which is close to 10 years old, which was never reviewed by its peers. Never reviewed. They refused to review this study, following this for the last 10 years. I think it should go to a referendum, binding referendum, on the town and let the voters decide this, not here tonight with 100 people, 120 people maybe. I think it should go to a referendum. I'd like to amend it, that it go to a binding referendum vote by the townspeople first.
Are you making that in the form of an amendment, sir?
Yeah, amend it. Go to a binding referendum.
Okay, is there a second on that motion? I'm sorry? Second on my left? Okay. Anything further you'd like to add, sir, before we take it to a vote?
Right, the only thing I would add, nine years ago, 10 years ago, we said no on this. This project is also going to include, and I've talked to many of the golfers in town, the tearing up and basically destroying the Bass River Golf Course. Bass River Golf Course should be in the records of historical golf courses. It's over 119 years old. It's a Donald Ross design. It is the oldest public golf course in the country. Comequid up here in Barnstable is the oldest. And we're going to destroy it to make a leach field. So I think this is part of the referendum of what we're looking at. Two, I haven't been able to get any answers from anybody whether or not there's been a flow study underneath Bass River Golf Course, where the water goes. It's part of the Sagamore Lands. The Sagamore Lands goes from Cape Cod Canal to Bass River. So this is why I would suggest that we put this to the referendum, let people decide. There's more that has to be discussed and looked in before we jump the gun, because, oh, they might be doing construction on Route 28, and nobody knows when that's going to start, because the state doesn't have any money right now. Their budget's a shot. We're lucky to get Route 28 right now reasonably paved, because of the money they put aside a couple of years ago. But this is down the road. Have the town heard anything definitely when they're going to start work on Route 28? Question for the town.
Okay, hold on a second. I want to give somebody else a chance here. Does anybody wish to speak to the concept of timing, whether or not this would be able to be put on a ballot that's coming up, or is this going to?
Mr. Colby can speak to the recent conversations with the state DOT as it relates to their timing on the Route 28 constructions.
Go ahead, Mr. Colby.
Yes, thank you, Jeff Colby, Public Works Director. There's particularly two projects. One is the Bass River Bridge on Route 28, and the other one is North Main Street, Old Main Street at Route 28, the intersection project. Those are both scheduled for 2022 on the transportation tip with Mass DOT.
So we're talking two years down the road?
Correct.
So we got time to put this on a referendum first? Let the townspeople decide.
Okay, the motion has been made to amend Article Eleven by asking that it be passed by a binding referendum at the polls. It's been seconded, and we're going to, anyone else have question or comment on that at this point? Yes, sir. Name?
Robert Savaro, Precinct Two. Thank you, Tom, for bringing that up. But one of the points I'd like to make is, number one, 10 years ago, we made the biggest mistake. We should have had wastewater put in 10 years ago. And this is why Hyannis has so much more business than we do, and this is why we have proposition overheads on the schools, is because we don't have enough commercial base on 28 to help support the schools and the rest of the town functions. So every time you vote us down, you hurt us long-term. You're voting down progress, not saving a few bucks.
Anyone else? Yes, sir, at the front microphone.
Yes, my name is John Deliso, Precinct Six. I hate to admit it, but I turned 75 a few months ago. I've lived in this town almost my entire life, a summer person, retired about 10 years ago. I have watched this ship sail through town over and over and over again. Every time, there's always a reason why it can't happen. I was fortunate to participate in the Water Resources Advisory Committee over the last two years, and got a wonderful education as to the potential for the town, which is clearly being inhibited by not having a wastewater system. There'll always be a reason to say no. Tonight is a historic moment. This is the first step towards, if you will, bringing Yarmouth into a new era. So I would encourage this amendment to be voted down, and I'd like to see us move forward with this program by voting the appropriation tonight and further appropriations to follow in the months and years ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, ladies and gentlemen, I don't see anybody else, so we're going to take a motion on, or take a vote on the motion to amend. So if you say yes to this, you're asking that the article be amended and be put on a binding town ballot. If you say no, it's going to be as printed in the warrant. So all of those in favor of the amendment to make it necessary to go to a binding town ballot, raise your hand and say aye. All those opposed to it going to the ballot for a binding referendum, raise your hand and say nay. All right, the motion to amend fails. That brings us back to Article Eleven as it's printed in the warrant. Anyone else have any further questions before we go to a vote? Seeing none, we'll move Article Eleven. All those in favor of Article Eleven as it was, let's see, as it was printed in the warrant, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It carries by the requisite majority. Linda, how you doing down there?
Mr. Moderator, if you could, two-thirds majority was needed to pass that.
Okay, so, thank you. Because it involves a borrowing, it's necessary that we get two-thirds. So I'm going to do that again, I'm going to ask for the vote, and then I get to make a determination whether it reaches two-thirds capacity. So on Article Eleven, all those in favor of Article Eleven as printed in the warrant, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It clearly passes by the requisite majority. Oh, carries by the requisite two-third majority. Article Twelve, and Linda, you're fine, so we can keep going? Okay. Article Twelve is being moved by Selectman Tracy Post.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move Article Twelve as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded on my left. Board of Selectmen?
Board of Selectmen recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
And Selectman Post?
Thank you. This is a housekeeping article to remove debt authorization from the town's books. The Massachusetts School Building Authority requires that the municipality have borrowing authority for the full amount of the feasibility study, even though the MSBA, which is the Massachusetts School Building Authority, will reimburse for a portion of the study. Instead of borrowing for the study, the town used free cash for the portion that the town owed. The rest of the study was paid for by the MSBA. The borrowing authorization is no longer needed, cannot be used for any other purpose, and would be calculated an outstanding debt the town can be issued, can issue by the bond rating agencies. Rescinding the borrowing is good for the town's bond rating.
All right, very good. Article Twelve is on the floor. Any questions? Moving Article Twelve, all those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Carries unanimously. That brings us now to Article Thirteen. This is the beginning of the CPA articles, and the first one is being moved by Selectman Forrest.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Thirteen as printed in the warrant.
Article moved and seconded on my left. Board of Selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
All right, Mr. Forrest, you, oh, Mr. Ellis, I guess. Very good. Nice to see you. Want to give us a little breakdown on this?
Okay, Article Thirteen is a required housekeeping article that appears at every annual town meeting. As required on the Community Preservation Act, a minimum of 10% of CPA revenues must be set aside for each of the following purposes: community housing, historic preservation, and open space. Additionally, 5% of the total revenue is set aside for operating expenses. FY '21 CPA revenues are estimated at $2.1 million and are based on a property tax levy of $64 million. Figures include an 11.2% match of $215,000, including supplements, match distributions made by the communities that have adopted the 3% surcharge. Please note that the explanation for this article is in the town meeting warrant, and we're not updated to reflect the revised match information below, which is: community housing reserve, $213,773; open space reserve, $213,773; historic preservation reserve, $213,773, and operating expenses at $136,886.
All right, Article Thirteen is on the floor. Anyone have any questions? Ms. Morris?
In the explanation?
Can you get a little bit closer, ma'am?
In the explanation, in the second paragraph, it reads FY '21 CPA revenues are estimated at $2.3 million, and in parentheses, $1.7 million. We're not translating from one currency to another, are we? What is that?
Didn't understand.
I didn't understand it either. Can you restate the question?
It reads, the revenues are estimated at $2.3 million, and in parentheses, it says $1.7 million. So what does that mean? I mean, we're not translating from one currency to another, are we?
Is there anyone that can speak to this?
Yes, I'm going to let Don, our administrator?
I need you to speak a little bit louder, sir.
I'm going to let Don, our administrator?
Oh, great.
Speak to that, as it was something that was printed incorrectly in the warrant.
Okay, thank you, sir. Donna, Don, can you turn that mic a little bit toward you, so it picks you up a little better? There you go.
Hi, Dawn Marie Flatt, the Admin Assistant for Community Development. That paragraph is the part that was not updated to reflect the revised match information. It also was accounting for different scenarios when CPA funding was going to be used as part of the, what, WIF? Is that when it was going to be possibly being considered for part of the wastewater infrastructure funding? So it doesn't belong in there.
So neither one of those figures is going to be used or is correct, right?
It's as I mentioned, which is the 2.1 million.
Just 2.1 million is the correct figure?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Article Thirteen, thank you for that question and clarification, Ms. Morris. Article Thirteen as printed. Any other questions? Seeing none, we're going to move it to a vote. All in favor of Article Thirteen, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It carries unanimously. That brings us now to Article Fourteen, another CPA article. Selectman Mark Forrest?
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Fourteen as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded on my left. Board of Selectmen?
We recommend.
Finance?
Recommend.
And who is speaking? Mr. Ellis again, very good.
This article appropriates CPA funds to the Yarmouth Municipal Affordable House Trust for community housing projects supported by the housing trust. To date, the project has created 137 housing units, preserved seven more, and supported another 30. Yarmouth now has 599 affordable housing units, which is approximately 5% of the town's year-round housing stock.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Article Fourteen CPA is on the floor. Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move Article Fourteen. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Carries unanimously. Did you raise your hand, ma'am? Nay, okay, so it carries by the requisite majority. Want to make sure your vote counts.
Mr. Moderator, we have it in the warrant as a two-thirds, just so for, there's some discussion as to a simple majority or two-thirds, but I'd request a two-thirds on this one.
Is there a reason why?
I don't have it on me, no. I think it corresponds with the Affordable Trust legislation that was passed.
Okay, all right. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go back to that. It requires a different quantum of votes, so those in favor of Article Fourteen, I need a two-thirds majority. If you're in favor of Article Fourteen, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It clearly passes by the two-third required vote, and that, again, now brings us to Article Fifteen, and Article Fifteen is being moved again by Selectman Forrest.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Fifteen as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded on my left. Board of Selectmen?
We recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
And Mr. Ellis again.
This article appropriates $8,000 in CPA funds for the community housing projects with the Howard Economical Council for Housing, HECC, emergency loan program to preserve homes for low-income residents with both financial and technical, with both financial and technical assistance.
Okay, very good. Article Fifteen is on the floor. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move Article Fifteen. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Passes unanimously. That brings us now to Article Sixteen, and that is being moved by Selectman Forrest.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article Sixteen as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded on my left. Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Rather than deal with these individually, I'd like to try to deal with them a group, much like we do the budget. So after Mr. Ellis gives us an explanation, if anybody has any specific questions either to A, B, C, or D that are listed in the warrant, we can hold those and vote on the others, otherwise we'll vote on them while as a package. So, Mr. Ellis, I recognize you.
Okay, thank you. This article appropriates CPA funds for historic preservation projects, with each item appropriated as a separate project. Project A would provide $13,000 in CPA funds to the Historical Society of Old Yarmouth to preserve and protect grave markers in ancient cemeteries. Project B would provide $35,000 to the Yarmouth Historical Commission to conduct a reconnaissance survey to identify potential archaeological sites in Yarmouth. Project C would provide $11,100 in CPA funds to Historic New England to produce an archaeological study and guide future construction work, including a visitor's center with parking at the Winslow Crocker House.
And D?
And D would provide $15,500 to St. David's Episcopal Church to complete the historic preservation of the Amos Baker House.
Sir, on item B, what was the figure you mentioned?
The what?
What was the figure that you mentioned on item B? The warrant says $26,000.
Twenty-six thousand.
Okay, I thought you said $35,000, all right. All right, so, does anybody have any question about any of those four items, A, B, C, or D? Seeing none, we'll move Article Sixteen as a group. All those in favor, raise your hand and say aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It clearly passes by It clearly passes by a two-third majority vote. That brings us now to Article 17, and Article 17 again is being moved by Selectman Forrest.
Mr. Moderator, I move Article 17 as printed in the warrant.
Moved and seconded on my left. Board of Selectmen?
Recommends.
Finance Committee?
Recommend.
And again, Mr. Ellis at the front microphone.
This article would provide $28,000 in CPA funds for the replacement of the north side backstop at the Lilig Field, closest to Sauvin Way.
All right, very good. Article 17 is on the floor. Any questions? Let's move Article 17. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Passes by the requisite majority. Thank you. That brings us to Article 18, and this is being moved by Selectman Holcomb.
Thank you. I move Article 18 as printed in the warrant.
Moved. Is there a second? Seconded on my left. Board of Selectmen?
Recommends.
Recommend. Finance Committee?
Recommend.
Okay, and who's doing the explanation? Mr. Knappick or Norm? Are you doing this?
I'll read the explanation. This article would permit the Board of Selectmen to dispose by lease, assignment, or easement or sale a small portion of land currently part of Smuggler's Beach. A disposition of approval would potentially resolve a long-term encroachment in a mutually beneficial manner, whereby use could continue, but with the town receiving some compensation. This disposition is subject to MGL Chapter 30B in order to provide for a fair and open process.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, Article 18 is on the floor. Any questions?
Mr. Moderator, it needs a two-thirds vote, please.
Yes, yep. Ma'am, are you coming forward for a question?
More a question of understanding. Can we get this in plain English, please? So what are you telling us? That you're going to lease to some arbitrary company this amount of land?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes, Mr. Knappick?
I'll take that. So it was brought to the town's attention that a property owner, many, many years ago, I think going back to the 1950s, built a, a structure, if you will, a bulkhead works for their facility, and it encroached on town property. And they were undergoing a repair because the bulkhead is deteriorating, and as part of the diligence associated with doing the engineering on the repair, they brought it to our attention that, many years ago, this bulkwork was put onto town property. So we had tried to work with the property owner and the Board of Selectmen at the time for what's referred to as a revocable license agreement that would allow renovation work to the property to be done. In the, part of that discussion, it was discussed, and the board recommended that we seek a more permanent, long-term solution associated with this. And under the Mass General laws, that would require us, if we were going to do a lease or if we were going to do a sale of property, that we bring it to town meeting for that authorization. So there is a small amount of value potentially. The property has to be appraised. It's about 386 square feet of beach-related surface. We're going through that process now. We'll enter, if this passes town meeting, we would enter a, what's referred to as a request for proposal for interested parties to either lease or purchase for some value that the RFP, or that the appraisal determines, that parcel of property. We would hope that the property owner would respond to that RFP, because this would be one way to address their situation. Ultimately, if they don't get a solution here, I suppose the town could order that the encroachment on town property be removed at a later date, but to some significant detriment to the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question, ma'am. Anyone else on Article 18? Seeing none, we'll move Article 18. Because of its involved with land, we need a two-thirds vote on this particular article, so I'll try for the voice unanimous. All those in favor of Article 18, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It clearly passes by the two-thirds requisite majority. All right, that brings us now to Article 19.
I move Article 19 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Seconded on my left, Board of Selectmen?
Recommend.
And Finance Committee?
Recommend.
And, Mr. Holcomb, are you explaining this one?
I'll read the explanation. The town is actively pursuing opportunities to implement solar photovoltaic installations, including ground-mounted panels and solar canopies where appropriate. The listed sites present opportunities on town-owned parcels that may be attractive for an installation. State law prohibits contract terms in excess of three years, unless specifically authorized by town meeting. This article provides the Board of Selectmen with the flexibility to reach agreements with potential vendors who are often seeking long-term commitments, more than three years, given the level of investment involved in a solar PV project.
Thank you, Mr. Holcomb. Article 19 is on the floor. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move Article 19. All those in favor of Article 19? Wait a minute, this is, this is listed as a two-thirds vote. Is that correct?
It's land, it's land agreement. The solar parcels will likely end up in a contract lease term of over, up to 20 years, and we need town meeting approval for that.
Okay, very good. Again, ladies and gentlemen, we require a two-thirds vote. I'll look for a voice unanimous. All those in favor of Article 19, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. It carries unanimously. Before we move on to the last and final article of the evening, I want to say a couple things. First of all, as you all know, this will be Selectman Norm Holcomb's last town meeting with us. I, from my part, want to just say a special thank you to him for the dedication and the service that he has provided to this town. Unless you've served as a Selectman, I don't know that you can truly appreciate the amount of work that goes into the weekly packets that you have to work through, and then the other committees and meetings that you have to go to to be aware of all the different things that are going on in town. And Norm has been with us for a very long time now. He's done his job honorably and well, and represented the citizens of Yarmouth in the finest tradition of being a Selectman. And I just wanted to say thank you for myself and for the town meeting, really. And we wish you all the best. And I know I'm not alone in these sentiments, so if there's somebody else who would like to say something, please feel free.
If I may, Mr. Moderator, I'd like to echo your sentiments. Norm has served the town not only as a Selectman, but a member of the Finance Committee. He's brought a great wealth of intelligence, experience, and critical thinking to the board, and a lot of insight in, especially in areas of financial analysis, so that we could make the decisions that we have made over the years with a comprehensive understanding of the various things that were at work in that decision-making process. So I'd like to join in, in your thanks to Norm, and ask my fellow board members if they would like to briefly comment, starting to my left with Selectman Forrest.
Thank you, thank you very much. Norm, I join with everybody here in this room in wishing you the very best in your future endeavors. It's been an adventure serving together, and you bring a lot to the community. And, again, we all wish you the very, very best. Thank you so much for all that you've done.
Thank you, Marty.
Well, I joke with Norm because he gets to travel a lot, as he should be able to. But I always say, when I grow up, I want to be like Norm. I wanted to say thank you very much for your service to our community. And as Mike and the other speakers have said, even before your time on the Board of Selectmen, you served on the Finance Committee, and you bring a lot to the table on financial matters, and it's very, very appreciated, Norm. I wish you the best of luck, and you and Pat have a wonderful retirement. Enjoy your time together.
Thank you, Katrina. Eric?
I'd just like to say thank you, Norm. I've always had a tremendous amount of respect for your, your knowledge and your grasp on complex financial matters. You know, I can, I kind of tend to govern from the hip, and I rely on you to set me straight in the event that I don't understand some of these things. So thank you very much for that, and I only hope that Mike, in doing his chairmanly duties, has a better gift in mind for you than a very uncomfortable wooden chair that's going to sit in the corner forever and ever.
Thank you. First of all, thank you, thank you all for your very kind comments, and thank you to the, to the town for allowing me to serve. It's been an interesting and, for the most part, pleasurable experience over the last eight years. I certainly would recommend running for office. I think it's important to contribute to the town, and it was just time for me to move on and, and let someone else with new ideas and new approaches step up. So thanks again to everyone for your support over the last few years.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, before we get to the last article, I do have just a couple of quick things to say. During this pandemic, we have had some really great support in the name, in person, of Bruce Murphy and Frank Fredrickson. Those calls every week have been informative, and have given me at least some sense of calm and some sense of measure of how Yarmouth is faring in this COVID virus. So I wanted to thank them particularly, and the Board of Health, and all of the department heads who were working very, very hard to keep all of us so safe. Those calls have been really very welcome. Before we break up tonight, I need to give you a couple of directions. As you noticed when you came in, all the middle aisles come this way. The only way you can go backwards is to go to the far right or to the far left. And I'm actually, to keep people from getting too close with one another, I'm going to dismiss you like in the old days when we were in classes, by rows. So if you'll just be patient with me, after we get through this last article, we'll move to adjourn, and then I'll move to let each section get up and make their way to the door so that we don't end up with a clog getting out the door. All right? Thank you very much. Yes, sir? That's "thank you very much."
He's not done yet.
This has been one of the highest honors in my life to, to preside at this meeting. I love town meeting. It teaches people leadership skills. It teaches people how to get involved and find their voice. I wish we had more students here. I hope we continue to try to get our kids in here. But town meeting is the last real bastion of democracy that we have, and if we don't support it and get people in the seats, it's going to die. And I tell you, it's just a joy for me to come out and see the people who really care about this town. And I enjoy it, and it's been an honor, and I look forward to finding other ways that I can support this town. But thank you, I appreciate that. Ladies and gentlemen, that brings us now to Article 20, and that is being moved again by Mr. Norm Holcomb.
Okay, thank you. I move Article 20 as printed in the warrant.
Seconded, moved and seconded on my left. Board of Selectmen?
Recommends.
And Finance?
Recommend.
And Mr. Holcomb, you want to?
Yes, with the passage of the Act to Modernize Municipal Finance and Government in 2016, cities and towns in the Commonwealth have changed to a five-year valuation cycle. However, to avoid a mass Department of Revenue scheduling conflict, Yarmouth scheduled the fiscal 2019 valuation certification year was deferred until the fiscal 2021. Prior to passage of the Municipal Modernization Act, the valuation cycle was three years, and any valuation consulting contracts reflected this cycle. The Massachusetts DOR Bureau of Local Assessment Certification Process consists of continuous data quality review, statistical ratio studies review, and valuation review. Do you understand all this? To ensure that proper appraisal methodology was utilized while uniformly and equitably applied to all property. A valuation program is based on the mass appraisal process, utilizing the components of an acceptable mass appraisal system. The mass appraisal system is comprised of data management, valuation, performance analysis, administration, and appeals. It is these various statutory requirements of the valuation certification process that valuation consultants help guide cities and towns through.
That was a mouthful. Article 20 now on the floor. Any questions? Seeing none, we'll move Article 20. All in favor, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Passes unanimously. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. That brings us to the end of the business for the night. I accept a motion to adjourn. Moved, seconded on my left. All in favor of adjourning, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'm going to ask the two groups on the far side to, to go down to the doors that are at the front of the stage and head out. And if the others could just hold your position for a couple moments. Much appreciation to Pat Armstrong, to Sandy Cashin, to Ken Jenks, to all of the staff here at Maticus Middle School, Middle School for all of the hard work that went into this, trying to protect us and keep us safe during this town meeting. They did a fantastic job. It took several days to get it all done, and thank you very much for that. No loitering. Get the heck out. All right. Group two and group four, you can head out. Stay safe out there. Maintain distances. Make sure you're watching over your neighbors. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, in the middle aisle, you're the only ones left. Thank you again for attending. Good to see you all. Remember, we have all kinds of volunteer activities and committees that are available if you're interested.
Can I call you Normie?
Yeah, 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 there are very few people that do that.
It's funny.
I had like one, one, oh, yeah.